Attendees, Richard Black.
Here.
Greg Malu.
Here.
Dan Sargent.
Here.
Dan Brown.
Here.
Alec Nose.
Here.
Eddie Tray.
Here.
Paul Brenner. All right. Discussions or approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes being accepted as submitted?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
All vote. Minute is accepted and submitted. Any community staff reports?
One thing I'll note, our next regular scheduled meeting is November 5th, which is Election Day, so we'll need to reschedule that. We already have a BCA meeting scheduled the day before on November 4th at 4:00. So it'll probably be good to do the Planning Commission right after, 5:00. That's a suggestion I have that works for everybody, maybe Monday, November 4th at 5:00.
Any input commissioners on that? Work, this does not work for anybody?
Did we schedule the workshop?
Uh, oh. Another update for the DeBose workshop, they called me today and said they were probably going to have to move that to December. They have some issues in terms of figuring out parking, so they want to make sure they get that all figured out before they submit the site plan.
So it won't be in conflict with the City Council meeting?
I had that on my calendar, it's the 21st.
Yeah, 21st. Yeah, that will be, yeah, the workshop wouldn't conflict anyway, but just an update on that, that workshop will likely not happen. I'll give official confirmation once this week is over, because they have until the end of the week, so the Minnesota site plan, but it's likely they're going to push it to the December meeting, because they want to make sure.
I don't have to be there, but I have a regular, regularly scheduled meeting of a board I'm on at 5:00.
On the board?
On November 4th. Could we maybe meet before the BCA? I don't know.
I mean, that would have to be 3:00 at the, yeah.
About the 6th, the Wednesday after Election Day. Anybody got an issue with that?
What?
The 6th of November for our next meeting, which is the Wednesday after, right, scheduled meeting.
I'm sure I'm fine.
Okay. 5:00, November 5th, be the next scheduled.
November 6th.
Six, excuse me, Wednesday after Election Day. Next scheduled PC meeting. Jonathan, any further business?
Uh, question.
Sure.
Is BCA 4:00 PM, November 6th?
No, it's November 4th.
Four.
So that's till the 4th?
Yeah.
And the?
Well, and we may, if that's the case, we're doing Planning Commission on November 6th, and we may want to move to BCA. I'll work and consult with the BCA members if we move to 6th. Because we try to usually have it on the same day, so that way we're not making two trips and do our two different things, you know, on the same week. So that's, you know, but I can, we can look at November 6th right now for Planning Commission, 4:00 PM.
Cancel the October 21 workshop.
So Jonathan, if you go over those dates one more time for everybody?
Okay. So currently, we tentatively, I haven't sent out any of the public notice, we have a tentative BCA meeting for November 4th at 4:00 PM. Looks like right now, the Planning Commission is wanting to move the Planning Commission meeting to Wednesday, November 6th at 5:00 PM. So that's, those are the tentative days that we have for both of those. I'll see if I can get the BCA meeting moved to that Wednesday, so we can just have it all on the same day. I know some of the Planning Commission, you know, I know Richard and the mayor are on the BCA, so it might be good to stack it together, you know.
Any further comments on that, or we can move ahead?
I'm booked for 6th already.
You are?
Yeah, I'm hosting a conference, and everybody's gathering that night. So the 4th, stick it to the 4th.
Stick to the 4th, yeah. Which I, yeah, I know like, some people, I do church events on Wednesday, so it may be difficult to try to get.
Hard to get that many people together, anyway.
Okay. I think maybe we stick it right now, try to do it two separate dates for right now. I don't think, I'm not sure we're going to be able to get everybody for BCA on Saturday. Yeah.
Further comments on staff or community reports? Any old business that we want to bring back up?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Oh, there you go.
I don't have an agenda in front of me, so this may be dealt with elsewhere, but at some point, I'd like to talk to you all about next steps for Imagine Mont Eagle. I've got an RFP I'm working on, that I'd like, love you guys' input on, but I don't know where that best fits.
You ready to do it now?
Well, I can.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Get it out of work. Right. By the way, that was a good meeting.
Great, great. Well, thank you, thank all of you who attended. So, those of you who weren't able to attend, we had a good public meeting about the Imagine Mont Eagle plan, what was that, Monday week ago, I guess? And last night, the City Council voted to approve that as a guiding document for the town. So we're now looking at next steps. And I think we've had a little bit of conversation about taking their recommendations and beginning to implement some of them. And specifically, we have talked about a review of our zoning ordinance to make it make more sense for a community our size, and also to think about our zoning districts rather comprehensively, and bringing in a consultant to help you folks as a Planning Commission body think about them. And so I've been talking with a funder who is interested in helping us with that, and they put me in touch with a planning firm out of Atlanta that I had a call with last Friday. I've got a call with another planner out of Chattanooga tomorrow to begin to refine the RFP. So what I wanted to do is introduce it to y'all, and I have a couple of copies, it's fairly simple, thought I could read it and then share it, and then see if I can just email it to y'all and have you give me feedback on the RFP itself. The idea is that I've got a funding deadline for, if I'm going to get this funded through a grant, I've got to have the grant submitted by next week. So I'm trying to move the RFP process forward, so that we have a product, not that we bid it out, we'll have to bid it out according to the normal procedures, but the foundation would like to know sort of what we're trying to do.
Any of you might not understand that acronym, RFP, is a request for proposal?
So, so what I have done is put together, I don't have enough copies for everybody, but y'all, it's pretty short. What it says is, "In cooperation with the local Planning Commission and elected officials, the consultant will perform a critical review of the current zoning ordinance, make recommendations on revisions focused on implementing the broad initiatives laid out in the Imagine Mont Eagle document. The specific work products desired," and this is where I think we need some more help, in particular, I'd like to know how many workshops y'all think you will need, because I'll need, they'll need to have a reasonable idea of how many times they need to come up here, whether they're coming from Nashville, or Atlanta, or Chattanooga, or Morrisville. I don't know where they're going to come from, because we haven't selected a firm. But it says, "Review current zoning ordinance with a focus on increasing residential housing availability and economic development within the downtown corridor." Those were two priorities that were laid out. "Participate in at least one public meeting to evaluate recommendations and gather input from the community." And so I put that as one, if y'all would like to do two, let me know. I did, the firm out of Atlanta made two recommendations when we were talking. One, they said, "The more times they have to travel up here," and this is them specing specifically about them, "the more expensive it was." So what they suggested we do is build off the public meetings we had with Imagine Mont Eagle, and then do more public meetings to sort of flesh that out, but limit those new public meetings, so that we could leverage the ones we'd already had, which makes the product less expensive. And the, and the second tab is also based on their recommendations. They really wanted to focus on the downtown corridor, and, which means looking at all the zoning districts, but it means really diving into what economic development in the downtown corridor might look like, and also really dig into this affordable housing issue, and how we can create more workforce level housing in the community. They thought those were two achievable things that could be done within budget. If we asked them to dive into everything, it was not going to be something that we could afford. So that's the logic behind that, but I'd be interested in more input. "Make specific recommendations to changes to zoning district definitions to better align with plan guidance." And they, again, recommended that I do the wording that way. I and several of y'all, and many people in the community have been talking, have been focused really on the map. And they came back and said, "You know, the map is really secondary. The primary thing is you need to know what you want. So let's look at C1, C2, C3, and the R1s and the R4s, and let's figure out whether they, as currently defined, match where you guys and gals want to go. And if they're not, let's work on the zoning districts definitions, and then we can look at the map perhaps as a secondary thing, because if we're just moving around imperfect commercial zones and imperfect residential zones, we're not fixing the problem." So they really wanted to dive down, and that would be probably multiple workshops with y'all as a Planning Commission to work through some of these issues together. So again, I'd look for some guidance on y'all, how many times you think you need to need.
Is there any timeline for all of this? Like, does all those take a month, or six months, or?
I would imagine we'd be looking at a six-month timeframe, from selection of RFP. So basically, we'll lay out in the RFP that we need this, we would like to have this product complete by X date, and that allows them to look at their scheduling and bid or not bid according to what their schedule is like. But I think it's probably not reasonable to think that we would get anything done in less than six months.
When do you propose to ask for the responses to RFP to be submitted?
So we'll work that through our typical process through Debbie and Town Hall. We have bidding procedures for professional services, and this would fall under those.
And what generally would, is the time limit for submitting a proposal for a professional service?
Oh, I would think a couple of weeks would be fine.
Unless, you're talking about our spending policy?
Yeah.
If it's above a certain limit, and I think it's 25,000, it's sealed bids, advertising, opening, and that sort of thing, put into our policy. Now, whether or not this fits into that, I don't know.
It would.
Okay, then lesser amounts, might be three verbal bids, three written bids. I have power up to two and a half cents, I think, something like that, and that's how it goes, but that's not the publication. But well, there are limits and procedures per each limit.
I don't think, I don't think this is, this is a secret. I'm trying to aim for a product that gets us as a town what we need, and stays in the $50,000 to $70,000 range. So, because that's where our funders have said that they can find a sweet spot for it. So that's what I'm aiming for. So I'd love to have your input about what we can put in. If the numbers come in high, then maybe we have fewer meetings with the Planning Commission. I don't, you know, how that works, we'd have to negotiate some of that. But that's kind of what I'm, what I'm aiming for.
The time I had of this, there was a lot of discussion, I think, at the Town Hall meeting and meetings before that, that zoning is a pretty important issue, I think, to the community, as far as zoning regulations, et cetera, et cetera. I think this is very important needs to be done.
Yeah, I do too, and I really liked, I liked learning the distinction between focus on the map and focus on the definitions. And it made sense to me to think, okay, you figure out what you want.
If anything's changed, that's changed.
And then, and then we can figure out how to apply some of those new definitions to the map. And then there may be, very well be some tweaks to the map that the Planning Commission will want to undertake, but that happens after we have sort of a good vision of where you want to go, and know what the designations are meant to mean.
Well, there are certainly some revisions to the map recommended by the Imagine Mont Eagle report, so if that's the guiding document, then we ought to consider their recommendations.
Yes, and, and I always let, you know that when you can squint really heavy, and everything gets a little bit blurry, and you see big picture, but you miss some of the details? And if you look at Imagine Mont Eagle's designations, and you look at our current zoning map, there's a whole lot of overlap in the colors, and so, but the definitions aren't different, right? So that's one of the reasons it made sense to me to sort of go this route. But I'll send this to y'all and ask for your feedback. I don't think that's a, it's, or RFP, I wouldn't think that's a neat sort of sunshine law violation. We'll incorporate it all in, like I said, I'll have a meeting with a planner again tomorrow by phone, and we'll be talking through some of these details too. He's looked at this, and so he'll provide some comment. So I want to get a combination of comments from several of you.
Is the idea with this only to concentrate on downtown?
No, the idea was downtown and housing, because those were two identified critical issues. And so it's more of a level of detail. Like, they're, they want to look at and are willing to, and if you do, it's not them. I think it's appropriate to have an RFP that looks at all our zoning designations, but when it comes to really drilling down the success, there was a feeling that we really wanted to drill down and get some details about downtown development and about housing affordability. And so those were two things where they thought that we could make some real progress.
If this is meant to result in a general plan, which we were required to have, in order to help us, it's got to not just concentrate on downtown. I mean, we've got to know what the plan is for every part of Mont Eagle, including way out on the ranges and so forth. So I'd hate to see us focus too heavily on the central area of the town, when we are often asked to approve things a long way from the middle of town. As a matter of fact, most of the town, things are not presented to us that are right in the middle of town, because it's pretty well built up. So the general plan to help us will need to be, you know, pretty useful as a guide to what we want in all other parts of town, as well as downtown.
That's, that's a helpful comment, and I will bring it up tomorrow with the planner. When we talked about general plan last week with the first firm I talked with, they said that was a mid-six-figure ask for a full detailed general plan. So that's not something that, I mean, they said 150K minimum. And that's, so what I'm trying to do is find something that lets us move forward and works within our budget, but your point is a good one. So I think a question might be whether this and subsequent steps that we might take could be incorporated into the Imagine Mont Eagle document and become a general plan. I think that that may be a budgetarily easier lift. I do think that I have every confidence that we're going to talk about, and they're going to be able to facilitate with y'all through every zoning district. So I think that'll get to a lot of your questions. I just think when it, when it came to specific action orders, they wanted to try to focus those specifics. So I would see a work product from this, and I probably need to tweak it if that's not clear from this, a work product that is sort of new definitions for each of our zoning districts, based on the conversations that they have with the community and with you folks, that then the Planning Commission could adopt, and then the Planning Commission could choose to apply to some or more or less parcels and make changes as they wanted to. And in addition to that, then that work product would also have some specific, more specific action steps on downtown development. Some of those action steps are probably further funding from foundations and public sources to say, you know, "You need to do an economic analysis of this type of business model within your downtown business core." Okay, well, we go find some funding to do that. "You need to find a developer who's interested in doing this type of housing within these zoning districts." Okay, and okay, we go find somebody to do that. I think that's the distinction that I, I got the impression that we were talking about. "I probably need to work on this," and I'd love any suggestion on how to build this out to make it clear that that's what we're getting. Does that, does that help?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Nate. Let's see, any other old business that we want to bring up at this time to discuss? Go right ahead, Mayor.
I made some notes from the public hearing we had on the three ordinances that we presented at the public hearing before the approval of the second reading of those ordinances. Ordinance number 15-24, which talked about the site plan, died for lack of a second. The other two ordinances were approved. But here are some of the comments, and I had suggested, this is not necessarily in order, but I'll tell you what I was thinking. I think we're going to need some joint workshops, Mr. Chairman, with the mayor and aldermen, as well as the Planning Commission members, because comments were made, and I did not address them, because these meetings are not to be debated, so to speak, but comments were made, seeking, the Planning Commission or the mayor and alderman, whoever, are seeking control, wasn't a problem before, it makes no sense to pass these ordinances, it's not done in adjoining towns. I'll address that in a minute. Other comments where the town wants control, it's choking the future development, it's overreach, et cetera, et cetera. My problem with all of that is, I'm not sure that all of that is true. I don't think that was our intent to draft the ordinances and pass them on. So I think we need some clarification before it goes to the council, that what we're doing and why, and maybe have a couple of joint meeting workshops. As far as not happening in adjoining towns, I attend from time to time when we get together, meetings of the mayors of Altamont, Tracy City, et cetera, and they have asked me for models as to what Mont Eagle does, because they're realizing that to develop downtown, to satisfy grant requests, et cetera, they need some kind of plan or vision, or whatever the word is, to develop their town. So I think they may in time, this is my guess, nothing official, they may in time be looking at some ordinances or some kind of organization development, organizational development to their areas. So I just passed that on, but I really think we need to improve our communication, so some of the citizens don't think, some of the council members don't think that we're trying to railroad anything, because I don't think that's our intent.
Do we want to try to schedule a workshop after this rescheduled November 6th meeting?
That, whatever the schedule is, that's fine.
We cancel that an hour before, 4:05?
It's fine with me.
Any input, Jonathan?
You guys saying a workshop on November 6th at 4:00?
Yeah, it's 4:05. Joint meeting of Planning Commission and Council.
They won't be able to make it.
There might be some new faces there.
Let me see what, let me see what time I got. Yeah, I'd much rather do it before.
So Mayor, if I understand you, there was complaints about the fact that elected officials and appointed committees may be making decisions instead of individuals, is what I'm hearing you say. And I'm not sure I buy that as a good argument, personally.
Well, I'm not sure either, and I was a little offended by some of the comments, again, because I don't think that's our intent.
Right.
But I would like clarification, so at least the mayor and aldermen can understand what we're talking about, and why they should pass it, or why it was even submitted to them for consideration. My only intent to have these combined workshops is to improve communication, so we don't have a lot of doubt or questions as to who, what, and why. Some people have asked, "Who submitted that?" Well, I don't keep hold on, I don't know who submitted what. I know that there was an ordinance, a request that we forwarded to the mayor and alderman. So it's only to improve the situation, I hope.
Thank you. So we will then, once otherwise noted, have a joint session, training session, Council and Planning Commission on the 6th of November, 4:05. Am I in agreement with people on that? Say what you think.
I guess something, we have two, you know, Mayor, Nate here, sorry, I think, another alderman.
Move your finger head away from you, I think you're getting feedback. That'd even worse, isn't it? Yeah, thank you.
Does it work for all the, all of our planning commissioners and aldermen?
I got confused on what date this workshop's going to be.
November 6th.
Wednesday, November 6th.
Which is a Wednesday.
At 4:00.
From 4:05 before the Planning Commission meeting at 5:00.
Do you know if you can come yet?
I'm looking, I doubt I can be there.
What's that? Is that one of our training meetings?
No.
That's not, I don't think that works.
Yeah, our training, the Planning Commission BCA training is the week before.
Thank you.
And if you guys have not, if you can make it to that, please RSVP to that.
Let me just tell you.
Well, mute RSVP and email Ashley Gaze, because she's one compiling list, so that way we have enough food for everybody.
Right. That's important.
Yeah, I will not be able to be there, but y'all can go ahead and do it, do it without me, that's fine.
Are you sure?
I am sure that I will not be able to be there.
Oh, we can do it without you.
I'm, I wasn't inclined.
What can't you attend, November 6th?
November 6th, I am hosting another event that day. I could do the 4th, but I've got people flying in from all over the country, the 6th through the 9th. And I'm there, I'm entertaining them.
5:00 on the 4th?
That, I mean, that works for me. The 4th is fine, the 6th is the beginning of this conference that I am hosting, and so I'm out the 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th.
I'm good with the 4th too, I'm just trying to think.
I'm still bad with it. Oh, you're bad with the 4th?
Yeah, you have issue.
We could move to the next week.
That's why we changed our vote from there.
Y'all can meet without me, but I can't be there.
I understand.
The next week would be fine.
So we will have some new members of the Council at that time, won't we? Train them too, don't we? Okay.
Well, in that case, if we're, if we're going to move the workshop to the next week, do we want to also move the Planning Commission meetings the next week?
I would say the gentlemen the same day, yes.
So I have other Planning Commission meetings on Tuesday and Thursday, I can do that Monday, which would be?
The 11th?
Yep, the 11th, no, well, it's Veterans Day.
Oh, shit.
We'll be close. Well, this is starting to get.
Well, Wednesday is 13th.
So now we're, we're looking at 11th, Monday, the 11th.
Well, we can't do the 11th, because Veterans Day.
That's right, that's right, it's a holiday. For banks, anyway.
Yeah. I'd be out of town that whole week.
There you go.
Well, do we just want, I mean, I just.
Why don't we just leave it on the 6th?
I agree. Let's just leave it on the 6th, if something else comes up, we'll change it then.
What's the time?
Okay, so the workshop will be at 4:00 on the 6th, the Planning Commission meeting will be at 5:00.
Yes. And the topic of this workshop, Mayor?
Was to revisit, I would say, that ordinance, and maybe come up with a procedure and how to submit an ordinance from the Planning Commission to the mayor and alderman, whether it's a joint workshop or a brief description of the whys and wherefore. Just, all I'm looking for is some way to improve the communication, because I was not pleased with some of the comments last night. And I think that we should clarify what we're doing and why, at least our position.
I agree, let's argue that for you. So we back on 6th? Workshop 4:05, meeting 5:00 to 6:00, or whenever? Okay, can we move on now? Yes.
So that's with the new, new council members, apparently?
Yes, I think so.
Do they, do they get officially, not they get officially certified until?
Till the end of the month.
Who will that have been 10, won't we?
Yeah, if you've been lucky, I mean, that's not my decision, that's.
I'm scared of all. All right, let's move on now. Any other old business that we want to discuss before we move on? Comments, public work?
One comment. In the meantime, if we have ordinances or things that are being presented to the Planning Commission, I mean, to the City Council.
planning commission, I mean, to the city council, that maybe we have a representative go to the meeting and explain it to them.
That's a good idea.
I mean, just in the meantime, and have a, give the reasoning and help them up.
All right. Let's move on. New business, adopted zoning ordinance, this is twenty-one through twenty-four, October twenty-four, the council just met, approved two out of three of these?
So what this will do, this ordinance, is basically, you know, in 2021, because there were flurry of changes that were made to the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, the zoning ordinance was re-adopted to make sure that everything that was in it was correct, and that's what. Because there have been issues in terms of what was removed, and what needs to be put back, twelve oh seven C being the prime example, and another, we've made multiple changes to the zoning ordinance since then, the town attorney has made a recommendation that the planning commission, the board, mayor alderman, re-adopt the ordinance again, so that way we clarify what is in the ordinance. So, and if the planning commission recommends it, we'll have the proposed adopted ordinance on the city website. Basically, twelve oh seven C has been added back in this proposed ordinance, so that way we officially recognize that it is, you know, because we have different, you know, versions of ordinance that have twelve oh seven Cs and don't have it, because they, you know, it was removed, but not, you know, public hearing at the time. So we just wanted to clarify what exactly is in the ordinance, and then, of course, the ordinances that were passed last night were in it, because anything that is not in this proposed ordinance, it's, it's not adopted, because this, any readoption preempts the previous ordinances that were, that were, were previous. So this is basically just making sure that we know what's in the zoning ordinance, we're not having deliberations about whether twelve oh seven C is in, or whether this is in, or this is in, we know what's in it.
Just a sidebar on that, these ordinance that did not pass because of a second, would you put that on the agenda for the discussion, as one of our topics, along with twelve oh seven C, for that workshop?
For the workshop, yes, please.
What's the description of twelve oh seven C?
Well, it's decided, we want to leave it in, or proceed and take it out, like they talked to it?
Well, I mean, it's basically what this, if you guys pass.
It's in.
Yeah, it's in, so we're putting it, yeah. I guess the only thing that would be, I would say, maybe, any discussions about twelve oh seven C be, you know, we, until we have an officially readopted zoning ordinance, but we know exactly what's in the ordinance, don't discuss it right now.
Don't discuss.
And don't, don't, don't address, because now we're starting to figure out, you know, I think it may muddy the waters too much, that situation. I, you know, I don't, again, I don't have, from what I've talked to the town attorney, we put it back in, because we recognize that a public hearing was not made, was not done, and, but we want to make sure that it's officially recognized as it's back in, because right now, we have a current version of the ordinance that does not recognize that, and so we need to make sure that it's recognized, if we're putting it back in.
Okay, I'm gonna have a discussion about it, let's leave it on the agenda, and throw it out in the last minute. Okay? Let's talk about these ordinances, so over the last, since twenty-one, the commissions changed, the codes have changed significantly, and what you have done, is you have done the work to get all those updated and on record on the website as our official zoning ordinances, all except for the one that they did not pass.
Yes, I have it put in, which I've sent to all the planning commission, because it's a hundred and fifty-page document, I printed it off, but it will be, if the planning commission recommends it to the board, mayor, alderman, we will post it on the city website, so that the public will be able to view what everything's in it, you know, twelve oh seven C is added, all the ordinance, the two ordinances that were added, that were approved last night are in it, so that way we make sure that they are recognized as part of the ordinance, so we don't have to re-approve them.
So do we want to discuss that, or do we want to wait at the workshop before we even bring that up? What do you think?
I think we, I have a motion to recommend the adoption of the ordinance, which Jonathan has submitted, it's an actual move.
Okay.
I second.
Any further comments or discussions? All in favor of that, we proceed to recommend this to the council for their approval? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passed, thank you.
And since we have sent this, right now, I know that there was a first reading for the campgrounds in C two and C three last night, I would recommend to the aldermen there here, that you, you know, I think you would have your second reading later this month, push that to the November meeting, so that way, if it's adopted, it's adopted after a new adoption of the zoning ordinance, because anything that's adopted prior to the adoption of zoning ordinance, of the new zoning ordinance, won't be in it, so you would just have to re-approve it again.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
A little housekeeping, yeah.
Yeah, a little housekeeping, so maybe, I would table that.
Table the adoption of the zoning ordinance?
No, table the, table the campground ordinance to the November meeting, so that, so you want to kind of have a, you want to make sure, so let me do examples, say the campground ordinance is adopted at the end of this month.
Oh, okay.
And then we adopt this approved, this readoption of the zoning ordinance in, at the end of November, that campground ordinance was not in the new, the new ordinance, so it won't be, and that new ordinance preempts anything that was previously, so we just have, we have to re-approve it. So if you do it where you re-approve, you readopt the zoning ordinance, and you pass the campground ordinance, and the campground ordinance can be added to the new zoning ordinance.
So we have a developer who's interested in making a petition for a campground in C three, use a special exception. Can't we also do this by simply delaying the adoption of the ordinance until after the second reading of the campground ordinance? That way, that developer doesn't have to wait another month to do his.
He still has to submit to the BCA, especially, because it would be a special exception.
But he wouldn't even have that opportunity, if we delay the second reading on that campground ordinance for another month, then that would put him back even another month, whereas if we move forward with the campground ordinance and delay adoption of the zoning ordinance, then you can make those changes to the zoning ordinance, and we can adopt.
But it'd be, it'd be a different ordinance than the planning commission recommended, so we would have to do this whole thing all over again.
What you just did.
Yes, but they, they made a motion to recommend it, because once it's changed.
Before the planning commission does.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, in the grand scheme of things, in the grand scheme of things, I, it seems to me that if we've got a developer who's been waiting six, eight more months to get this off the ground, having you guys make a motion in thirty days, just like you just did, to allow him to be able to, to develop thirty days earlier, might be worth the effort.
I would think that the council could go ahead and do that second reading, and we could approve it then, we don't have to wait for it to be adopted, do we? Once they approve it.
So that becomes the tricky part, because again, it's, it's all about the timing, because he still would have to make special exceptions, the BCA would still have to meet and either approve or disprove that, and it becomes, I think, it becomes a situation is, is that approval, where he's doing it, is it valid if, because the BCA can be a month later, or be a month, you know, after.
Well, what I'm proposing is that we take no action on the motion that was just made in city council, we take no action next month, we approve the campground ordinance, and then you guys make the same motion a month from now, and then we act on that motion, and then we will have adopted a zoning ordinance that has the, the campgrounds already in it, the developer can go ahead and begin his petition to BCA thirty days earlier, and so it's just, it's just helping him out, it's giving the appearance of trying to move with alacrity rather than having another delay, we've, we've delayed this, this fellow a lot. Wouldn't that do the same thing? It would delay getting a unified zoning ordinance by thirty days.
I mean, that's the, I would say, you know, I think, I mean, I'd say it's up to the planning commission to determine whether I and the board, mayor, alderman figure, I think, again, this was something recommended by the town attorney, so, you know, that's really something that we're just relaying what he wanted to.
If the, haven't we already voted to send it to the council?
Yeah, but they don't have to act on it.
We don't have to act on it.
I think what Nate's proposing is, not that we change our resolution we just adopted, but that the board of aldermen not act on it until after they have acted on the campground.
But we would, you'll have, you'll have to do it again.
Which would then require us to do it again, but, I mean, you know, we can't, if the board of aldermen doesn't want to act on it, that's gonna happen sooner or later, where there's gonna be another amendment to the zoning ordinance that'll have to be incorporated.
I just, all things being equal, if I've got to delay a developer who has waited many, many months to get this special exemption, or I've got to delay the, the formal adoption of an ordinance.
I'm with you on that, I think we need to push that forward.
Well, I mean, it's already, it's already passed. It's up to the board, mayor, alderman, if, if, if that is the situation, board, mayor, alderman, please let me know, so I can put that on the agenda, because in that case, I will have to add the campground ordinance into the proposed agenda, and, yeah.
And then they'll have to vote to adopt it next month's meeting.
Yes, they'll have to vote to, you know, adopt it, they'll do this, this whole thing again.
All right, we in the same page now on that? I think so, too. Or there's a discussion on that?
Now, what exactly is this? This is, this is, this new ordinance is like.
It's, you're really would be readopting the entire zoning ordinance to make sure that everything that is supposed to be in it is in it, so twelve oh seven C was never properly removed, so it needs to be reflected as in it. All these new ordinances that have been passed are, you know, we want to make sure they're all in it, and they're, they've been passed, and that everything's correct.
So, but when you readopt all these zoning ordinances, which were passed over months, one year.
Yeah, I mean, this is a three-year span.
Yes, so will it have one number?
What's that?
Will the new, the new readopted ordinance have one number, and rather than all these numbers that are on all these ordinances now?
If the ordinance surpassed this, would have its own ordinance, and that's what you're asking.
The ordinance passed would have its, its own number, and.
Yeah, it would have, yeah.
And that would supersede all those other numbers that are.
Well, these ordinances are based, the way that Montego does theirs is based off of what, when was the ordinance passed in terms of the year, so I think it's twenty twenty-four.
Exactly.
So it's based off of, it's, it's not necessarily based off of, this is an ordinance number that it, I guess what I'm saying, it's just based off when it was passed, so.
Each time we adopted, we recommended, and then the alderman had adopted, a change to the zoning ordinance, the recommended ordinance has a title, which has a number, but it refers to the sections of the zoning ordinance that's being amended, and when this is all said and done, we will have a single document called the zoning ordinance that organizes itself by section numbers the way it does now, not all these individual ordinance.
That's what I was getting at. There won't be all these individual ordinances with these individual numbers that apply to the dates, you know, all just be under one.
Yeah, the, the.
One ordinance.
What, I think what you're referencing, all these, the previous ordinance in the last three years have been amendments to the ordinance, so that's, you can, you're making individual changes, amendments to the ordinance. This is an overall readoption, the entire ordinance, hundred and fifty pages, and that we are, yeah, and there's not really a major change to be made than what we currently have, besides twelve oh seven C being officially recognized, it's in it. That's, that's kind of the main things, we just want to make sure that we have, we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is, and that, you know, from, whenever it's passed, I mean, it's, it might be probably December meeting, depending, from then on, we recognize that is the ordinance, there's, there's no any ifs or buts about whether twelve oh seven C's in, whether, you know, campground special exceptions are in, or anything else, that's what we recognize it to be.
So be readopting all the amendments to the zoning ordinance as?
As presented.
Completed.
One, one, yes, yes.
As part of the document.
They wouldn't be, right, they wouldn't be amendments anymore, they would just be.
Within the document.
Got it, thank you, I just, I want to clarify what, yeah.
Sure, I think some other people need that, not just you.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Where are we with the campgrounds? If we follow Nate's suggestion, does the mayor and alderman need a first reading, a public hearing, and a second reading?
You've had your first reading, you should have your second reading and public hearing.
So the first reading counts, and it's on the record?
Yes, it's, it's, it's been done.
Is that right?
Then you have your public hearing at your, at the end of this month's meeting.
So that would be the end of October?
Yes.
For a public hearing?
And then that would, yeah.
And voting on.
Presumably passed, if, if the board, mayor also choose, it would be passed, and then, like I said, if that is passed, then I would ask that the, someone, one of the town, let me know, so I can update the proposed adopted ordinance, and have it on the agenda for the November meeting.
For the November meeting?
Yeah.
Of who, the mayor and alderman?
The planning commission.
Oh, the planning commission.
Because we would then have to send another recommendation back to the board, mayor, alderman, with the included campgrounds.
Yeah, I understand, put in the campground, so there'd be a first reading, a public hearing, and a second reading on?
Yeah, usually your public hearing is that it's your second reading, you only have to have two readings, one of them has to be a public hearing.
So after the campgrounds, there'll be another ordinance, which will be first reading, public hearing, and second reading?
Mm-hmm.
That takes us into December?
Yes.
Or January.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on that, now that we've cleared all that up? Special exception zoning amendment.
So this was just adding additional restrictions, I think the planning commission want to have some additional requirements for special exceptions, so the BCA have something to go by. One thing I might say, since we are going to delay the adoption, the readoption of zoning ordinance, perhaps we table this to next month's meeting, so that way, this special exception, if it is adopted by the board, mayor, alderman, can happen after the new adoption of the zoning ordinance, so, because like I said, it's, it's all about timing, whenever you're doing these changes, because if anything that's adopted prior to the, the single hundred and fifty-page document that is presented, you know, it's just a bit a, anything that's not in there will not be there, you have to re-approve everything out of that, you would have to redo another amendment to be able to add it to it, so it's not the final, that's the final document there, so that's why I say that, but if the special exception is passed after, so even five minutes later after this adoption of the zoning, readoption of zoning ordinance, then it is considered amendment, and it can be added to that newly adopted ordinance.
If this proposed special exceptions amendment were recommended, could, wouldn't it be postponed in effect by the requirement for two readings and a public hearing?
Well, I'd say, let's say if we recommend it today, they have their first reading at the, the end of October, and then they have their second reading in November, and public hearing, and they, and they passed it, but it was not in the newly adopted ordinance, would probably be at December or January meeting, then it's, it's null and void, because any new adopted zoning, readopted entire zoning ordinance, it preempts anything prior, because you're recognizing that as a sole ordinance.
So it would do away with the first vote, the first reading, is that what you're saying?
Well, I would just say that we maybe table this recommendation to next month's meeting.
Special exceptions.
Yes, special exceptions, so that way it can go in line, it can be after, you know.
But I think Alex's point is, it would be adopted after, anyway.
No, well, let's, let's say you guys recommend today, let's say, let's, let me make sure I have the timeline correct, so let's say you recommend the special exceptions zoning amendment today, the first reading would be at your, the end of your October board, mayor, alderman, alderman meeting, your second reading would be at your November board, mayor, alderman meeting, that's passed, it's, it's passed in November, then you have, let's say your newly adopted ordinance is recommended at the November planning commission meeting, your first reading is at the end of November, your second reading is in December, and it's passed, so let's say it's passed in December, but this. passed, so let's say it's passed in December, but the special exception was not in that ordinance, so it's, it's considered null and void, because it was never part of that ordinance, the newly adopted 150-page ordinance.
What concerns me, Jonathan, is that when we have a meeting next month, there may be another proposed zoning amendment that would be hard to deal with if we didn't hold up the codification of the zoning ordinance. We recommend amendments a lot, and the town passes some of them, so if we don't want to codify the zoning ordinance until we're sure that it includes everything that could be in it, based on the timing, I don't know how you ever have any assurance.
Well, I think this situation, we would just have, we only have two ordinances, amendments, so we have the campgrounds, which presumably pass in this month, and then we have a special exception, all I'm saying is that maybe we table the decision to recommend it to next month's meeting, so that way it will follow the same timeline as the new adoption.
Can we go ahead and discuss this, in case we have changes or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I agree, because to me, not being the sharpest knife in the drawer, it's just a restatement of 1703C, I mean, it just tells, asking basically the same questions, aren't we? Special exceptions, what we're adding to this ordinance.
It's just adding some additional requirements in terms of what the BCA is required to...
We're asking the BCA to do what we're doing with...
Yeah, well, it's just, so that way, you know, the BCA has the authority to ask all these questions, but it's not explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance, so they, you know, they can make sure that it conforms to any current growth or development plans that it has, they can make sure that it does not adversely affect traffic in the area, and traffic study may be required, you can do all that, you can require that it doesn't adversely affect nearby residential area, based on landscaping, these are all things, as long as there is justification for that, so you have to prove that there is justification so it can't just because you want it, it has to be, okay, you're next to, you know, 50 residential townhomes that you're going to make, or 50 residents, and you're going to make a ton of noise, you need to put some type of sound barrier there, that's, that's something that we want to prove the special exception unless you do that, because we know it's going to adversely affect that. This is mainly just putting it in writing, so that way the BCA has some teeth to say, you know, we, we can require this because it's explicitly stated in our zoning ordinance, versus having to make that justification every time, and then you'll do there, so this just gives a little teeth to the BCA, which they may not currently have in terms of explicitly written stuff with requirements.
Isn't this what Sam was saying, we needed, and that for special exception, this is what you have to have?
That's kind of, I kind of understood it, that's why the discussion on the 1703C jumped in there, is it has those five similar questions that the planning commission does, now we're telling the BCA, they must do the same thing, the planning commission is telling the BCA that they need to ask five similar questions, every time they address the changes zoning, right?
Yes, so that way it makes sure that it doesn't adversely, so it has different things like traffic, nearby residential areas, stormwater, public services, undue public services, where, because, and it's, you know, when a special exception is a case-by-case basis, so it will differ from a by right, so when you velocity by right, you're saying that anywhere, let's say, you know, some things by right in C2, it says that we, we recognize that anywhere in C2 is not going to adversely, if you have this use, it's not going to adversely affect anybody, really, but then we recognize, well, if we do by special exception, there are certain areas in C2 that we may not want it there, because it would adversely affect neighbors, and it would create undue burdens on them, it would make, it would do something that, you know, you could create stormwater runoff on somebody's property, which puts a, you know, you're now violating somebody's property rights by putting, you know, stormwater on their property.
Come in, anybody? Go ahead.
I think this is very valuable, and in part, I think it alerts applicants to what they're going to be required to demonstrate, and I think it helps support the board's zoning adjustment, which we've been told sometimes is under pressure, based on the argument, well, at such and such another place, you permitted this variance, and now I would like the same variance, well, this makes it clear that different areas have different concerns, and I think it would help the board's zoning adjustment make reasonable distinctions and explain those distinctions.
Thank you, Alex, further comments? And any public comments?
This is also a good checks and balance for everybody here, if the BCA is asking the same five questions as the planning commission, you have different makeup of both boards, so I think it gives you some checks and balances, in case one side looks at it a little bit differently, and that opens up a discussion to some point, I mean, even though it's repetitive, so to speak, in terms of their criteria, I think it's a good checks and balance on, on the planning commission, and the BCA, and ultimately up to the, to the Alderman and mayor.
My cue, other comments, statements? Any further discussion on this issue before we move forward? We're not going to address it in the vote today, and I think your recommendation on tabling is a good idea, I think it puts it in line with our other processes to run a little smoother, as you said, so do we want to bring this back up at the next meeting?
So, if you are tabling it, then do you make a motion a second to table it for the next meeting?
And do we want to include it in the workshop, or do you think we need to?
If, I mean, if the planning commission feels that this is sufficient for the BCA, and it's something that is sufficient for what they want, you know, we don't want to make it too, I mean, I think the planning commission just wants to give something for the BCA to have a little teeth, to be able to, you know, enforce the special exception, so there's, it's, it has some teeth behind it, versus, you know, you grant a special exception here, so why don't you grant it here?
I think that was the last one.
You're right. A comment that may confuse the situation, and so throw it out, but there's, there's the possibility that when the mayor and the board of Alderman meet next, we decide, you know, there may be will among the people to decide to go ahead and adopt the ordinance, even though I would suggest we do the campground and then the ordinance, does it make sense for them to recommend this anyway, just like they just recommended the ordinance, and if we don't act on it, we don't act on it, and they do it again? I'm asking, I don't, I'm not sure.
I understand it that granularly.
Well, basically, this would just table it to, so that way we are in line with the newly adopted ordinance, so you can do a, you can have, you can prove the, the whole ordinance, and then you can prove the special exception, so that way, the special exception becomes an amendment to this newly approved ordinance, so we don't have to worry about the timeline, we don't have to worry about that, as, and all we're doing is delaying that for a month, where we table it, and then the planning commission recommends it. So basically, we go like, at the, at our November planning commission meeting, the planning commission would recommend the approval of the entire zoning ordinance, we include campgrounds, and then they would also recommend special exceptions ordinance amendment. The board mayor Alderman would approve the entire zoning ordinance, and then they would approve the special exception, because then the timeline becomes, the ordinance has been adopted, anything approved after that can be added to that ordinance.
As soon as I said it out loud, I answered my question, sorry, I'm just...
Thank you, Jonathan. Further discussions and comments?
So this would be a new ordinance, not an amendment?
Yeah, the, the special exceptions would be the first amendment to the new zoning ordinance.
Any new business that we need to discuss? Make your comments now?
Make the ordinance table.
On the table? Yes, you're right. We're going to get a motion first.
It would be tabled, special exceptions zoning amendment.
Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be tabled, Jonathan for the next one. Any new business, thank you. Discussions, comments, will we call them, right? Can somebody call it a night?
Move a turn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All voted, feeding a turn, thank you all.